That never crossed my mind.
Welcome, everyone. I call the February 19th regular City Council meeting to order. I'm Issaquah City Council President Tole Marts. Mayor Paulie is excused this evening, so I will be serving as Mayor pro tem. And I ask those who'd like to join the council and myself in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is Audience Comments. Audience comments may address the council at this time. The guidelines for public participation are displayed on the screen. Please limit comments to three minutes. Those who signed up will be called forward first. If you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. Comments may be made on any topic except the closed-record quasi-judicial decision before council tonight, which is Agenda Bill 7681, Polygon Parcel D Preliminary Platte in the Issaquah Highlands. If you hear as part of a group, please identify a spokesperson for your group, and when they are speaking, if you want to indicate your support by raising your hand, that helps us know who's here on what particular issues. Has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Sharon Fries.
Excellent. If you'll come forward.
I live up in Miramont, but my husband and I, for the last four years, have owned Art by Fire, the glass studio down on Front Street. When we bought that location, when we bought that business, a lot of what attracted us to Issaquah was the downtown feel. And we felt, as part of creating and continuing that downtown feeling that we love so much, that we needed to get involved with Downtown Issaquah Association. So we volunteered a bit here and there for a couple of years. Last year, I joined the Board. This year, I'm the Vice President of the Board. Downtown Issaquah Association has done so much for us to create that downtown vibe that we all have come to love. So I wanted to share a little of Dia's news with the Board tonight, or, excuse me, the City Council. Downtown Issaquah Association last year was very pleased to partner with Gaila Gutierrez as our interim administrative manager. And we took a mindful pause to look at all our programs and try and decide what we needed to do to align ourselves better with the Main Street approach to truly support revitalizing downtown and keeping that ongoing for another 25 years, because next year is our 25th anniversary. So we have just posted our Executive Director position, and the job search has started with an anticipated hire date of May 1st for our Executive Director. We are also looking to add a part-time program coordinator and more volunteers to our group. So we appreciate all the city has done to support us and our mission, and we also hope you'll help us to spread the word. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else sign up this evening?
Yes, Kathy McCory.
Kathy McCory, 155 Northwest Gilman Boulevard. I'm the CEO for the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight with more downtown news, just trying to give you an update on Salmon Days. And even though Salmon Days was last October, it takes a little while to kind of put it to bed. And so we just wanted to, one, thank everyone for their support. Salmon Days is a huge event, drawing over 150,000 people to downtown in two days. It truly does take a village. We had almost 500 volunteers, working literally thousands of hours to help us get this done. We had city park services, police department, fire, all helping us and providing their services. The list goes on and on, and I'll touch on a few more in just a minute. But I also want to bring to your attention that this year is the 50th Annual Salmon Days. And so, talking about milestones, we've got a couple of big ones coming up, 25 years for Dia, 50 years for Salmon Days. And so there's a few new things that we're adding to the mix we wanted to make sure everyone knew about. One of them is, is we've decided what better way to celebrate Salmon Days than with an art competition. So we've just launched a two-month art competition. We'll be taking admissions from children under, I think it's under 12, and then 12 to 18, and then, of course, adults. And we're looking for designs that will become anything from a signature poster, piece of art, t-shirt, sweatshirt, et cetera. So you'll be seeing us out and about, and we'll have a public judging at some point. And we'll be launching all of those, so the community can see them. We have a theme that, trying to get back to our original roots, of it being to promote the hatchery. And so with 50 years, our 50-year theme will be 50 Ways to Save the Salmon. And so you'll see that prominent in everything we do, and a big push towards awareness of our salmon hatchery. And just getting back quickly then to last year, you know, we have over 72 nonprofits that benefit from Salmon Days, and that's everything from our school district, because we hire their school buses, Youth Advisory Council, the Senior Center, ROTC, Boys Clubs, Girls Clubs, Schools, every single possible nonprofit practically that you can imagine. And together, they raised over $100,000 for those 70 nonprofits last year. We also have the restaurants downtown, the ones that reported in the two days of Salmon Days, they had over a quarter of $1 million worth of sales. We had 105 nights were booked just from vendors. Dock Dogs, I did not know this, little bit of trivia, one of Dock Dogs' judges that comes over here every single year is actually from Australia, and so they stay with us. So again, big boom to all of the economy. We couldn't do it without the city, and we'd just like to thank you again for your support.
Thank you for your comments. Saw some hands of support out there, some silent clapping, I appreciate. Anyone else signed up this evening?
No.
All right, well, thank you. Would anyone else like the opportunity to speak who has not signed up this evening? Give your name and address and...
Yes, Derek Kappler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I think Paul's going to steal some thunder here later with a picture that'll be on the screen of having to do with poles and the wireless issue. And those of us who live where wooden poles are already there have to be concerned about what could be hanging on them. They can put 20 cubic feet of stuff on these poles. If you convert that to buckets, it'd be about 35-gallon buckets. It's a huge amount of volume that could be on these poles. Now, in the Highlands and other places where they don't have all these wooden poles, gee, there won't be a problem. They'll just do vaults. But if you try and do vaults in many parts of the Highlands, you're going to run into phone, fiber, dah 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 dah. There isn't room to put all this stuff necessarily in that narrow area between the road and the sidewalk in the Highlands. So we're going to be looking at above-ground stuff in the Highlands as well, in my opinion, anyway. So I hope the council will look into this really carefully and protect our views of our wonderful areas. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like the opportunity to speak this evening?
Hello, I'm Christina Bruning. I'm the President of the Board of Directors for the Downtown Issaquah Association. And I'm here this evening just to remind everybody that the Downtown Issaquah Association, also referred to as Dia, is a community-led, volunteer-driven organization that promotes and enhances the vitality of Old Town Issaquah through different programs and events celebrating the unique culture that we have here. In November, I came and I shared a little bit about how and why I got more involved in Dia. And I've lived in Old Town since 1991, and I really wanted to bring the voice and the spirit of Old Town residents. This past year, I must say, Old Town residents have come out in force and have now claimed the Shell Gas Station at 232 Front Street South, or North, I should say, as their gathering place. I also shared gratitude for the city, from Parks Department to the Main Street Tax Credit Incentive Program, to your team. Everybody in the city has been extraordinarily supportive of the Downtown Issaquah Association and has made it possible for us to attract more people to walk the streets, in a good way, and frequent our businesses. In February, I shared a little bit about our season kickoff, which we started with a pub crawl, and we've added a fourth pub crawl, and that's in collaboration with the Issaquah History Museums. We also talked about streetscapes, super excited about streetscapes. So thank you for your support of that. Downtown Issaquah Association looks forward to being an active partner in making that all happen. Today, I'm here to highlight some very exciting news. You probably saw the banner over Front Street. Right, everybody see it? It is the start of the Wine and Art Series that starts on March 2nd. It's Saturday evening. It's going to go for four months, so March, April, May, and June. Farm Fresh Flowers, not sure if it's going to pull it off on March 30th, based on the weather patterns, but March 30 is going to kick off the Farm Fresh Flowers Market, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Shell Gas Station. That's going to run for five weeks. So we build that market, and that'll stop as soon as the Issaquah Farmers Market begins up at Pickering Barn. And we look forward to keeping the doors open. The Old Town residents have said, when we stop by, we want to be able to pop in. We want to be able to sit down. And so we opened the doors a lot last year. We're looking forward to doing that even more this year. February 25th, it's this Monday, is our annual open house. This is a three-part event, so from 3:00 to 3:45, we're going to highlight accomplishments for 2018 and look ahead at 2019. From 4:00 to 5:30, you can come and be a part of, actually, a committee meeting of four different committees. And from 6:30 to 8:30, we're looking forward to a volunteer open house and training. So Dia is powered by community volunteers. Last year, during a progress visit from the Main Street program, I was asked, as the Board President, what was I most proud of? And I said, "The people." The people who have stepped forward and contributed many, many hours of a variety of different type of services has made Dia shine. And we look forward to a super exciting year in 2019 with supporters like the City of Issaquah and the local small businesses and our community partners like the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you at the events.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else this evening? Oh, some hands up in support of that. Anyone else this evening wanting to speak who wasn't signed up? Does anyone desire to speak this evening? And third call for the final time, does anyone desire to speak this evening? Hearing none, audience comments are closed, and we will move to Committee and Regional Reports. There is no Mayor's Report this evening. City Administrator Moon will provide a brief report later, under good of the order. And so we will proceed to the Consent Calendar. Now, one of the items on tonight's Consent Calendar, Agenda Bill 7681, Polygon Parcel Deep...
Bad order.
Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over... I'm sorry, I skipped over the stuff in blue. My bad. I was just looking at the stuff in red. I am so sorry. How could I possibly forget Committee Reports? Lindsay?
I don't have a Committee Report yet. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Hutt.
Thank you, Council President Marts. The Council Land and Shore Committee met on February 7th, 2019. There were four items. The first item is AB 7681, Polygon Parcel D Preliminary Platte, Issaquah Highlands, quasi-judicial, closed record. The Committee recommended approval, and this is on consent for this evening. AB 7682, Proposed Amendments, 2018 Comprehensive Plan, Central Issaquah Plan, IMC and Central Standards. There was a discussion by the Committee, and there were recommendations for changes in a number of places. So this was recommended by the Committee to be referred back to Land and Shore Committee, and we'll go back to Committee on March 7th. We also discussed amendments to IMC 18.07.480, Community Facilities Standards Regarding Public Buildings. And on this one as well, the Committee wanted more information and some more options from staff, so this will be returning back to Committee. And then we have, we had AB 7726, 2019 Docket of Comprehensive Plan Amendments, and this item is on our consent agenda for this evening. The Cascade Water Alliance Resource Management Committee met on February 14th, and this Committee discussed water quality of Lake Taps Reservoir, as well as the surrounding region, and this was part of the ongoing discussions in that Committee about planning for activities and priorities around water quality in the reservoir for 2019 and going forward. And we also discussed some potential policy areas such as stormwater treatment, herbicide, pesticide, and fertilizer use, and septic systems. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will meet on February 27th at their office in Bellevue, and this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Council President Marts. The Services and Safety Committee met on February 12th. We had two items on the agenda. Agenda Bill 7702, Criminal Code Amending IMC 9.05 Paragraph A. This item has been returned to council and is on consent for this evening. And we also took up Agenda Bill 7723, Cemetery Fee Increase, Amending IMC 2.20.040. We had a spirited discussion on the cemetery fees and a number of unanswered questions, so we are bringing that back to Services and Safety on the March 12th Committee Meeting. The next meeting of Services and Safety will be March 12th here in council chambers, and that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you, Council President Marts. The Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, February 7th, at PSRC Headquarters in Seattle. And since Tish is putting up the other diagram, I'll jump to that report first. This Thursday on February 21st is the next meeting of the Council Infrastructure Committee Meeting, and thank you for putting up the picture, Tricia. The meeting will be here in council chambers, and it will also be live on ICTV, and of course, streaming live from our website as well. So in addition to the regular water, sewer, stormwater, and transportation project updates, there's going to be one item on the agenda. That's Agenda Bill 7714, which pertains to wireless communication facilities or cell towers. And this picture I put up just to perhaps inspire more people to take some time and become familiar with this issue in front of the council, and we would love to hear comments from you about the bill in front of us. Last year, this council, the administration proposed, and this council adopted some new regulations for the deployment of cell towers, and particularly, small cell towers throughout the city. And then in the summer of last year, the current administration in Washington, the FCC, changed some rules, and it opened up the placement of cell towers for the infrastructure for 5G networks. Well, opened it up quite a bit, and in fact, it invalidated some of the rules that we put in place a year ago. And so the federal government is basically trumping our local control. Apparently, they think there's some emergency, and having towers wherever the wireless carriers think they ought to be is now, it's incumbent upon us to, or we being asked, to change our current law that regulates where, and some of their form and size, to update our city municipal code to conform with the federal code. And that's the purpose of the meeting on Wednesday. This item is to consider the changes to that ordinance. But I have asked for this picture to be put up, because it's a simulation provided, so you have some idea. We heard a comment earlier. You had some idea. That's a simulation provided by Verizon of an existing 30-foot tower with close to a 20-foot extension put on top of it, and the box that's hanging off it, and the antenna, the hardware on the top as well. Basically, these new regulations that we're being asked to consider to adopt into our own IMC would allow the wireless companies to install those in the right-of-way, in public right-of-way, in areas where we currently prohibit them. So our law is considered prohibitive to the new federal law. So where we sit right here, we're only tens of feet away from public right-of-way on Sunset and Front Street, and so it's possible that's, only at the whim of the wireless communication companies, they could choose to use our public right-of-way and install such towers. And so we're going to be discussing the changed legislation during the meeting, and I'd be very, very happy, and I encourage and invite, everybody who has an opinion or a feeling about this to come to our meeting on Thursday, the 21st, at 6:30 here in council chambers. And we would love you to hear the discussion and potentially hear what you have to say as well. So that's my CIC report. Thank you, Tish, again, for putting that up, and I'm going to go back to what I started. This past, well, back on February 7th, the Growth Management Policy Board met in Seattle at PSRC Headquarters, and there were three major items on the agenda. We're having a discussion, of course, we're updating Vision 2050, or updating Vision 2040 to something we're calling Vision 2050. And it's very important for many people in this area that, as we grow, that the issues of equity are addressed. And the Board is really, we spent an extended period of time on the 7th discussing equity. So between now and 2050, the Puget Sound region is expected to grow by 1.8 million people, and we're also, at that same time, expected to become increasingly diverse. The growth will bring many benefits, but it could also exasperate a number of challenges, including housing affordability and economic and cultural displacement. So we've got a presentation from Nora Liu, who is from Race Forwards Government Alliance on Race and Equity, and she presented on an approach for incorporating equity into decision-making and policy setting, which I found fascinating, because I don't think we've ever really had that as a purpose or a way with which we looked at our policies. And so we then broke into small groups and discussed how equity, you know, could be reflected in the regional policy that we set, and how growth can benefit more of the region's residents, and how to mitigate displacement and improve access to opportunity. So the PSRC will be developing an updated demographic profile for the four-county region, and they have written an equity briefing paper, which I highly recommend, and they'll be developing some new analysis tools to, that are going, come out as part of the supplemental draft EIS for Vision 2050. And they will, the staff then will be drafting some policies for the Board to consider for adoption into Vision 2050. We also talked about housing policies, and again, the staff has proposed a number of changes, and this purpose was to get the Board's feedback, because the rising costs of housing and the growing homelessness are top concerns for people in the region, and it has been consistently identified as a key topic for us to address in Vision 2050. So again, we will be, it'll come back for action later on. Again, it was discussion and an opportunity for staff to take our input. And those are the major two items. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Council President Marts. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on February 14th, and first of all, we started off with a monthly mission moment, because it's Eastside Fire and Rescue's 20th year, so every month, we will be talking a little bit about the organization. And there are some additional things happening this year, such as a special banquet in October. It's a little more special than the annual banquets that they usually have. We also had elections for Board leadership, and North Bend Council's Alan Gottelf was re-elected as President, or Chair, sorry, of the Board, and our own Chris Ray was elected as Vice Chair for 2019. We had a briefing on PFAS. I'm not going to try to pronounce that whole word. A draft report is being commented on right now, and that will be out in the coming months for public consumption. City of Issaquah and Eastside Fire and Rescue also are working together on getting another $400,000 from the legislature this year for the DOE's budget. There is, on April 27th, there is a Fire Ground 101 Training, and it is by RSVP only. And not only are Board Directors invited, but also councils and representatives from the member cities and organizations, plus key staff. So if key staff of City of Issaquah or any of you on council would like to participate, and I've participated before, and it's a very fun educational event. Again, it's April 27th, so you can get ahold of me or Chris, or get ahold of Eastside Fire if you're interested. We also had a storm report, and the focus of that report was on a couple of things. Number one, if y'all haven't heard, North Bend had at least three feet of snow, and it was a very, very significant event for North Bend. And so we heard about North Bend's, what they were going through. And then we also talked about and heard about Eastside Fire and everything that they did to try to react to the snow event that we were having. So the Army National Guard was housed at some of the stations. They had ambulance transports. When ambulance transports weren't available, Eastside Fire was staffing their aid cars, even at levels they don't normally staff them at. Eastside Fire was, had to creatively use their vehicles and their equipment in order for them to be available to respond if necessary and to have access to hydrants if needed. Issaquah provided snowplows to North Bend, and so we heard from Chair Gottelf that he was, he and North Bend very, very appreciative of the help that the City of Issaquah provided. And Eastside Fire also staffed North Bend's Emergency Operations Center. One of the things that we also heard about, however, is from the Chief of Eastside Fire, is that we need to figure out a better way to work together on emergency management, and we need to formalize an emergency management organization going forward. He says it needs to be better organized. He made these comments, saying, "I know this is a public meeting, and I know these are public comments," so I felt the need to share them here. He shared that in the last six months, we've had two events that were triggered, emergency operations. One was the snow events that we recently had, and the other one was the 911 system operational problems that we had. He called those both exercises, that were both of those were exercises in dysfunction. Primarily, I think he was talking about coordination with King County in particular. It took King County three days to get out to North Bend, and that once Dow Constantine, the executive, got out to North Bend, then the resources started flowing. But I thought it was important to share that the Chief of Eastside Fire and Rescue thought that the region could do a better job. That's my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Deputy President Batiste.
Thank you, Council President Marts. The Eastside Human Services Forum met on Wednesday, February 13th, in Bellevue, and we went through a variety of updates. We had a year-end financial report and discussed the meetings that, and events that were held in December. We had a work plan approval, still working on the draft, so I'll be speaking more about that in my next update, a budget approval, and organizational review. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Sound Cities Association didn't meet in February. It will next be meeting Wednesday, March 13th. I had mentioned to council about some sort of county-wide transportation issues. When looking into it a little further, and with the assistance of Public Works Engineering, decided there really wasn't anything structured enough yet at the county level to have a deeper conversation at council, so as, but as things move forward from the county, I will look for input from the council to better represent us. better represent us on Sound Cities Association, on the Public Issues Committee, I should say. Growth Management Planning Policy Council is meeting Wednesday, February 27th. We don't actually have the agenda yet, which is a little unfortunate. But I just want to mention, you know, I want to thank Paul for talking about GNPB. You know, for folks that are interested, there was a very substantive conversation in the Growth and Development subgroup of the strategic plan development around what do we want to do as a city and how do we want to try to influence how we have to respond to the growth that's coming at the county level and at the state level. And so if the public is interested, those subgroups are, were of course, recorded and will form, you know, a backdrop for the conversation that we have as we move forward with the strategic plan. But it's really important. And this year, more so than ever, as we develop the strategic plan, I realize how critical it is that we be at the table for that conversation. I want to give the report out on the Ad Hoc Finance Committee because I've sort of mentioned it in passing. We are going to be, on March 4th, we're going to be talking about two things coming out of Ad Hoc Finance. The first is that we have put together sort of a bundle of transportation goals that we would like to accomplish in the five-year timeframe. So sort of a straw man for conversation amongst the seven of us. But we kind of went through and had some criteria, and it should be a good conversation. It's going to lead to, there will be sort of a taking of the, I don't want to say taking the temperature of the room, but I hope on the 4th to have a conversation about what we want to do with that package of goals and how we want to bring it back for action in front of the full council. There is one element of that set of transportation goals that is time-sensitive, and it has to do with the response to Washington Department of Transportation pinch point, which we've talked a little bit about. There's going to be, that's sort of the second half of the conversation on the 4th. And that's going to be more substantive and more time-critical, and we're going to need to make a decision sooner rather than later. But I want it within the context of what the Ad Hoc Finance Committee is going to be recommending that we adopt as a comprehensive set of transportation goals, again, for a five-year timeframe. So that is coming March 4th. With that, we are done with regional reports. So, back to my script, and any errors in my delivery of this script today is entirely my fault. The staff has been really supportive of my, I haven't done this in, what, Paul, seven years, six years, something like that? So there is no mayor's report this evening. City Administrator Moon will provide a brief report later under good of the order. We're going to proceed to the consent calendar. One of the items on tonight's consent calendar, AB 7681, Polygon Parcel D Preliminary Platt in the Issaquah Highlands, is a quasi-judicial matter. I'd like to ask City Attorney Scott Snyder to facilitate the Appearance of Fairness disclosures for this item.
Thank you. And good evening, councilmembers, and those of you who are meeting for the first time this evening. Pursuant to the Appearance of Fairness doctrine, objections must be made at the earliest opportunity when the basis for an objection is known. Accordingly, your procedures ask that you reveal certain communications. I'm going to ask three questions and would ask if any of you, these raise issues for them, please put these communications into your record this evening. First, has any councilmember had a communication with the applicant or any member of the public regarding the preliminary plat outside of the public meeting process? Hearing none, Chair, I'll proceed. Does any councilmember want to reveal a business or personal relationship with the applicant or any member of the public who has participated in the hearings to date? Hearing none, I'll proceed to the third. Does any councilmember own property close to the proposed plat? Again, hearing none. Chair, with your permission, I'll now ask that any member of the audience who has an objection to the participation of any councilmember, ask you to come forward and state your objection and place in the record the basis for an Appearance of Fairness doctrine objection. Mr. Chair, I see no one has come forward. So any Appearance of Fairness doctrine challenges have been waived. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. I appreciate it. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes, have.
Thank you. Does any councilmember desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? All right. Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as listed.
Second.
The motion to approve the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes, I believe unanimously, seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is Agenda Bill 7538, Updated Water System Plan, last heard at the January 22nd council meeting. And I would like to invite Public Works Engineering Director Sheldon Lin to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Protown, council. My name is Sheldon Lin, Director of Public Works Engineering. And I'm going to give a short presentation about the water system plan, its processes, and just slightly touch on rates. And then a final recommendation for adoption of the plan in accordance with the recommendation in Agenda Bill 7538. The requirements for planning under the water system are governed by the Washington Administrative Code 246290. In 2017, HDR, consulting firm, as well as city staff, worked to prepare the water system plan that has been in council's arena for the past year or so, reviewing and evaluating different items. It was referred to committee in March of 2018. Since that time, there has been four council workshops, and Department of Health has been reviewing it, as well as the King County Utility Technical Review Committee. In 2018, there were some policy issues discussed. Specifically, the major policy issues were conservation and demand forecasting, supply strategies with systems operations, as well as water treatment. Following those discussions, where there was opportunity for public comment, the agenda bill was referred back into Council Infrastructure Committee with a recommendation back in January of this year for adoption. However, at that time, the SEPA process had not been completed in that the SEPA determination of nonsignificance had been issued, but it had not been, the comment period hadn't been completed nor the appeals period. Since that time, the appeals period, as well as the comment period, have expired, and the city has received no comments on the SEPA determination. As I mentioned earlier, I was going to talk a little bit about rates because at one of the workshops, rates were discussed briefly. The rate impact solely due to the water treatment plant was further evaluated by city staff in a very rudimentary way. And it appears that over a four- to five-year period, single-digit rate increases would be needed to add up to cumulative rate increases somewhere between 35% and 40%. It's a very basic analysis that has a lot of caveats associated with it. There was no rate study or anything done as part of the water system plan that is focused for this year to bring in a full utility-scale rate study. The rate study also is caveated, or I should say, this rudimentary analysis is caveated in that there was no assumption for connection charges in here. It's purely rate-driven. There's bond counsel that needs to be consulted in this because there's strategies on bonding, timing, and things like that that can affect the rates that are associated with a water treatment plant. So water treatment plant was one of the larger capital items that came out of the water system plan. And so with that, since the SEPA processes are all complete, which is what was postponing it from the January meeting to now, the recommendation in the agenda bill is to approve the resolution number, whichever it is when the clerk says it, adopting the 2018 Water System Plan Update. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for Director Lin? As Member Winterstein?
Thank you, Sheldon, and thank you for addressing the rate. I know that I was wondering about that. And you just said something curious about there was no assumptions about connection fees. I know that a big part of the capital or the funding for our utility is through creating new connections. So I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. You didn't do analysis on what the fees ought to be, but you made some assumption that some of the funds to be raised would still come from connection fees.
That's correct. Some would come, but I made an assumption of none at this point because no analysis has been done on that aspect of the project.
Okay. And so what you said a moment ago is that in order to fund a water treatment plant, and that's an item unlike roads and parks and other things that we do, it would be the customers of the water utility through rates and connection fees that would pay for that water treatment plant. And that you see that as a number of rate, done by a number of rate increases over a number of years, and that total rate over today's rates could be from 35% to 40% more than we pay today.
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Just want to make sure I understood. Thank you for doing that.
Other questions? Director Lin? Nope. All right. Would someone like to care to make a motion? Councilmember Hunt?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-2, adopting the 2018 Water System Plan Update. Second.
The motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-2 has been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. This water system plan has gone through a number of meetings with council, and a lot of staff work has gone into it. So firstly, I just wanted to recognize that and recognize the process and all of the hard work. And then I also wanted to relay some of the public comments that have come to us or some of the comments that have come to us by email on this topic. It has been a long topic, and it has been a long process that the council has gone through. And so over the course of that, we've had a number of discussions. And one of the items that we have received some emails about is the concept of fluoride. And this is in the context of a water treatment plant that council will be discussing as a follow-on conversation to this water system plan. So we did receive email from, and information supporting fluoridation of water for community health benefits and prevention of cavities from Arcora, which is the foundation of Delta Dental Washington, specifically from Emily Furman, who is a program officer. And we also received information from a pediatrician, Betsy Browder, also talking about the community benefits of fluoride. And Robin Wright, who is a director of Pediatric Oral Health Research and Policy Center, American Academy of Pediatric Dentistry. And I'm looking forward to talking more about the science in support of the community health and dental health benefits of fluoride as we move forward into our conversations around the water treatment plant and our options. And I look forward to also supporting this water system plan this evening.
Other comment or discussion on the bill in front of us? Nope. All right. I want to add, this conversation about fluoride, I think, is long overdue in our community, and I'm looking forward to having it as well. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving Resolution Number 2019-2, adopting the 2018 Water System Plan Update, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is good of the order. Do any councilmembers have anything for the good of the order? Council Deputy President Batis?
Thank you, Council President Martz. As we've been considering different items for council leadership, one item has risen to the top as Council President Martz and I have been talking, and that is just having more information about the engagement with our community and different opportunities that would be available for council. So Autumn and her team have put together a list of things that could come out. We've been sort of discussing this back and forth, and a list of items that could come out every Friday to council via email. And so I'm going to read through some of those ideas so far. The first would be the latest edition of the Issaquah Insider. That would have highlights of events that might be of interest to council members, invitations to upcoming engagement efforts that are not highlighted in the Insider, recap of recent engagement efforts, and then a link to the neighborhood engagement map through Facebook and Twitter. And then other items as it comes up related to community engagement. So I was excited to, Patola and I are both excited to be able to talk about this with you today, and we're hoping that having a little more of a touch on that and maybe every week, that gives us an opportunity to look at that on a weekly basis and see if there are some community engagement opportunities that council would like to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm looking forward to that, augmenting our conversation about getting out into the community even more. Other items for good of the order? City Administrator Moon?
Great, thank you very much. This is going to help me advance some slides here. There are three items I wanted to mention this evening. I'm going to start with a little report out about our snow response from the past couple of weeks. So Issaquah and our region, as you know, was recently hit with a lot of snow, the largest February snowstorm in decades. The initial snowstorm began at 5:00 PM Sunday, February 3rd, and lasted through the afternoon of Thursday, February 7th. A new storm system moved into Issaquah on Friday, February 8th, just to add to the fun. Major response operations lasted through Wednesday, February 13th. I'm going to recap our response to this incident and, in doing so, hope to recognize our hard-working staff that put in over 3,300 hours responding to the storm. Issaquah's Incident Management Team, or our IMT, coordinates the response to significant snowstorms by organizing activities between city departments, including Public Works, Police, Parks, Fire, Communications, Emergency Management, Support Services, and the Office of Sustainability. The response effort also includes agencies and businesses such as King County Emergency Management, Lakeside Industries, and Cadman. Our Public Works Operations Team was well-prepared in advance of this event. Issaquah operates nine plows with sanders and three loaders working three sand storage After the most recent snowfall, our crews had to dig themselves out just to get to work. Many of them left homes and families without power and with snow-loaded roofs to come and plow snow for Issaquah. At times, our crews operated tandem plows to help clear some of our steepest streets. Innovative equipment repairs by our mechanics kept snow-clearing equipment on the road. While crews worked 12-hour shifts, the equipment ran 24 hours a day for 10 days straight, stopping only for fuel, sand refills, and new plow edges. At one point, our mechanics hotwired a malfunctioning snowplow sanding controller while repair parts were ordered. The temporary fix worked well, just as long as that truck was not turned off. During the incident's PWO, performed snow response operations around the clock. Community members were extremely Community members were extremely positive about our response, and we're showing some of those comments this evening. Over the course of the two storms, 2,335 lane miles of road were plowed and treated with 930 tons of sand, 176 tons of salt, and 8,300 gallons of de-icer. We are still working on the total estimated cost for this storm response. Community members showed their appreciation in many ways, including snacks, always appreciated. One family reached out to us via social media and asked how they could support our PWO crews, and homemade cookies were delivered that next day. I also want to thank all the staff that has worked so hard on putting together our GIS maps. Thanks to that hard work by our GIS tech, our Public Works Ops and Communications Teams, our new online snow plowing map was very popular among community members. This map allows anyone to track the progress of snow plowing and/or sanding operations in Issaquah during an active event. See some more positive response about our GIS map up on the screen. Once our streets were substantially cleared, we provided plows and resources to the city of North Bend, as Councilmember Goodman mentioned. North Bend had declared a state of emergency and was in desperate need of its neighbor friends to help out. But once our streets were also plowed, our Public Works crew's work is not done. They responded to many reports of urban flooding, issues that were caused by snowmelt, and Public Works cleanup efforts are continuing even today as we try to remove what's left of piles, including mounds of sand. While Public Works Operations is at the front and center of our storm response, I want to make sure to mention that many other departments participate and extend extra efforts when events like this happen. I want to thank our Parks Facilities Team for ensuring safety at our buildings, including sidewalks that you've seen in various pictures. Our Police Department also ensured the safety of our community. They were out on the roads and responding to calls in our dispatch communications center. Como 4 actually captured one of our officers helping a driver in need of assistance. The coverage was viewed more than 100,000 times online alone. And even during a challenging time like this, our teams have a great attitude. They embrace public service, and they do their jobs exceptionally well. I'm grateful for those who continue to provide service, even though at times it was a little trying, including this group from our community center. During the winter weather, all of our staff fielded a ton of calls from the public, many emails, and they deliver that excellent customer service. We also have staff that take on additional responsibilities to allow their coworkers to focus on storm services. Our communications team worked around the clock as well to keep our community informed about our response efforts and to field customer service requests. Within a two-week period, our team had outstanding online engagement, as these numbers show. Also, we have a lot of community partners that stepped up. Due to missed service days, Recology offered an emergency drop-off site for garbage and recycling at Tibbetts Valley Park from February 12th to the 15th. We're also aware of the numerous times community members stepped up to help neighbors in need. Here's just one example on the next slide of an Issaquah Community Emergency Response Team, or Acert Team, responding to help Issaquah Nursing and Rehabilitation Center shovel the snow from their parking lot. So events like this emphasize the need for everyone to take responsibility for emergency preparedness. This means having a plan and practicing that plan with your family and friends. Everyone should also have a kit with food, water, supplies for at least seven days. During winter weather, please stay off the roads if possible. Heavy traffic makes it very difficult for our crews to do their work, ensuring our roads are in the best possible condition. This is a good time also to remind you that the city of Issaquah, in coordinating with Issaquah Citizen Court, is offering Community Emergency Response Team training starting March 6th. You can register at issaquahcitizencorps.org. And the Map Your Neighborhood program is also a great way to get to know your neighbors and discover how you can help one another during a snowstorm and other emergencies. Go to issaquahwa.gov/MyN. And I'm going to end with this amazing photo of our new bridge at Confluence Park, and this is care of our architects on the project, David Evans and Associates, our project managers. So that's item number one. Thank you, Tisha. Item number two, I wanted to happily announce that Beth Goldberg has accepted our offer to become our next Finance Director. Beth has served as interim since October 2018, and will become our regular Finance Director on March 1st. Beth brings a wealth of experience and a strong commitment to our organization, and I'm very, very happy that she's joining our team. She previously worked for King County, the city of Seattle, and the city of San Mamish, and I hope you'll join me in welcoming her to both our organization and our community. Lastly, it's with a heavy heart that I share the news that our court administrator Lynn Campo recently passed away. Lynn launched Issaquah Municipal Court right here in 2005. Since then, she led a dedicated and talented team that proudly serves communities in Issaquah, North Bend, and Snoqualmie. As a former president of the district and Municipal Court Management Association, Lynn was also a respected leader among the court community statewide. In 2016, she was awarded this organization's President's Award for her service. Most recently, Lynn also chaired a committee committed to finding a statewide case management solution. She will be remembered as a smart and witty leader who is extremely passionate about serving this community. I'd also like to thank court administrators Trish Kinlow of Taquilla and Margaret Yetter of Kent, who both sprang into action to assist our court team following Lynn's passing. They provided much-appreciated support on our court tasks with poise, reassurance, and professionalism. In addition, I'd like to recognize the hard work and strength of our court staff who have stepped up during a very hard time to keep our court operating smoothly. So thank you to that team. That's all I have for Good of the Order. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator. I, you know, I want to echo the comments about the amazing work that Public Works did. I had a coworker from another nearby city, I won't say which one, but you and I were commiserating about a week into snowpocalypse, and he said, "Well, we haven't been plowed yet. Have you been plowed yet?" And I said, "My street gets plowed every morning." It was just, the look he gave me was really sort of sad, but good for just a measure of where we're as a city. And yes, that, you know, I have 80 feet vertically down to the street, so the ability to go onto the map and say, "Oh, yes, it has been plowed this morning," saved me from trudging down to the bottom of the hill in the snow and the ice. So it was an extraordinary situation handled with grace and professionalism by our city staff, so. There, oh, upcoming council meetings? Oh, sorry, anything else for Good of the Order? Nope? Okay. Upcoming council meetings tomorrow, February 20th. Work session rescheduled from February 11th. Topics include citywide strategic plan, this is where we start to bring back all the hard work that occurred in the subgroups, and then we're also going to be going over meeting room security training. And then the March 4th council meeting, I already mentioned the Ad Hoc Finance Committee pieces that are coming back. Additionally, Old Town and Transit Centers parking study will be coming back as well. There is no executive session this evening, so there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at eight, exactly eight o'clock PM.